Okay, this is our first meeting for August twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. Um, for roll call if everybody, um, board members present would state your first and last names. Um, Laurel and Bockelman, Jessie Roper.
John Evans.
Sarah Brown.
I'm also joining us, of course, we have our liaison from the trustee board, trustee daily. And Parks, our manager of our Parks and Recreation Department, Billy Cooksey. Um, do we have, um, to do a public comment on non-agenda items?
Casino Aaron's.
Yeah, oh.
Yes.
Aaron is also part of that roll call. Okay, did everybody have a chance to review the minutes? And this is from our June nineteenth meeting because we did not have a July meeting.
Yes.
Yes, do any edits or changes that need to?
I'm fine with my name being spelled out. Seriously, J O H N, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Just letting Aaron know that he can speak now.
So besides that one edit, um, are we good?
Yeah.
We want to make a motion to approve the minutes from June.
I'll make motion to approve the minutes from the June nineteen, twenty twenty four meeting.
On second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So, welcome to our newest post member, Sarah Brown, thank you.
Thank you.
Excited. Um, we had a great interview with Sarah and we're really excited, um, to have her here. And, um, you've shared with us that you have a really big passion for trails. Uh, several of the parks as well, but, um, passionate for trails.
I'm excited, I think the connectivity of, of our town will, having the ability to access various locations, especially our downtowns with the upcoming instruction taking place next summer is a really big deal. And, um, I'd like to see some real attention put on how we encourage our folks to frequent our downtown businesses while all of that's happening. And having trails that connect from all the neighborhoods and just feasibility of getting downtown is really important. Something I'm excited about.
Yay, we're excited to have you.
Thank you for your volunteer service, we appreciate it.
Uh, so tonight we have a presentation by Alexis Kennedy.
So, everybody will be able to see your slides up here and with the two of them, I'll just try to go through as you.
All right, um, my name is Alexis Kennedy, I'm a third year cadet Girl Scout. It is my ninth year participating in Girl Scouts and I'm an eighth grader at Wellington Middle High. Um, I've earned my bronze award just a few years ago. And a silver award is the second highest Girl Scout award that is earned during your middle school career. The first step in a silver award is to identify a problem or an opportunity in your community. This is the step I'm on. And I've met with Ross from the library and that's what connected me to this group. Um, the second step is to make your plan. The third step is can, to connect with people in your community and to bring in additional community partners and stakeholders. And the last step is to take action on this project. My timeline is to submit the project to GSCO in the next thirty to sixty days for approval. And that's just my steps, that has nothing to do with the city or the organization. Um, I want to be fully completed with the project hopefully by April, two thousand and twenty five. So that gives me time to submit all the paperwork to GSCO by August thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. And some other, um, examples of a take action that girls have done are get outdoors. She worked on trail, with the Trails Department to make trails for five to fourteen year olds to get outdoors. Um, protecting pollinators, she created an awareness campaign to educate the people in her community on the harmfulness of bacterial bacteria. And to find your place in STEM, she created a curriculum with activities for the Boys and Girls Club focused on the inside of STEM. And these were just examples from other things that girls have done and it doesn't have to influence if I are a project.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here, this is awesome. Um, we might have a few questions for you, or if you have any questions for us, I mean, this is a very open forum in discussion. Uh, seeing a little bit of email correspondence and speaking with Alexis's mother. Um, they've kind of struck out a couple of times, she's really been pushing hard to try to find a, a partnership to work with within our community. So she can achieve her, um, silver badge as well as maybe potentially transitioning that into the gold badge, which will be a high school project. Um, so just something to think about for this board, if we can, um, you know, aid, um, Alexis in finding something that would meet her objectives as well as, you know, our objective is a pros board, I think, you know, uh, they align very well, right? We're all reaching out to the community and that's why we're all here. So, um, I think there's, you know, a really good opportunity for you to have work from this board, help find you, um, a project to push you down an avenue.
Yeah. Do you have any specific interests or anything?
Um, most of the projects that I have done are focused around outdoors and like, we've tried pollinator boxes and putting a buddy bench in Istone or Rice, but none of those never really worked, but I do like to do outdoors and stuff. That's what I chose first.
Did you have some ideas?
I had another question and maybe this is my lack of knowledge of the Girl Scouts, but when you have your silver badge and then you have your gold badge, is that one where you can kind of roll one project into the other, or do they have to be to, focus on totally separate things?
Um, I guess it can be like added on to as from your gold or from your silver to your gold. But the gold award, since it is the highest award that a Girl Scout can earn and they don't just give it out. Um, it is like you have to like, it's a very big project, there has to be like everlasting, but has to last on in your community. So it could, like, it doesn't have to be a totally different project, but not just the same project over again.
I'm wondering if we, if you could kind of do a step one of the project being your silver and then look at what's the next step to continue that same vision, that's career gold badge.
Okay.
Uh, so my first thought and something that would align with what both the Parks Department is doing and things that we potentially talked about in prose in the past, more passing, um, is, uh, for the silver badge, um, if this is something you're interested in, maybe doing community outreach and presenting the importance, um, in the health benefits, um, for all ages of, um, gardening and or having your own vegetable garden, um, and then potentially transitioning that, the idea, the community outreach to actually helping us as a Parks Department, implement community gardens as part of our long lasting, long term, multiple places in the community um, that actually have community gardens. And, um, the reason I think about this is we've talked about it, you know, with, with the pollinators outside of here, um, something for the senior center to add to what they have as their activities and functioning. We have multiple places across town that have, um, um, high population density in small areas that don't have access to yards that are adjacent to parks or close enough to parks where, um, i- in my vision, a, a community garden would be very beneficial to these folks. And I think as a silver badge, the outreach, the understanding, giving the information out of why it's important to garden and, you know, how it helps the ecology, everybody and their health and safety. Um, and then transitioning that potentially into a goal, that was my first kind of swing at the multi-steps as well as something that would absolutely benefit our community greatly.
She had communicated that to me when you guys had called.
Yeah.
And I really liked the idea of commit, making a community garden for.
Kind of on that same note and something that really impacts Wellington is, um, awareness around low water use landscaping. Um, like zero escaping benefits of it, how to do it successfully, you know, those kind of things that helps actually with affordability for people's homes and families, so that might be something too. I really like growing food though, that seems like more fun. This, that, this project is, you know, it has some real, you know, concerns and those kind of things. So I don't, I don't know what kind of project you're trying to tackle, but that would be a great one. The other one I was thinking about is trail safety, uh, like our underpass, for example, who has been acknowledged as something that's not safe. Um, and not welcoming, maybe, not safer welcoming. Um, so there's been a lot of ideas about murals, increasing lighting, improving drainage, like those kind of things, that's another problem, I think that has been, we've heard about a few times.
Yeah.
So just a couple of other things to throw in there.
Any other thoughts?
These are great ideas, it was a great presentation, thank you for taking the time to come, you did a great job. Yeah, I love the idea of a community garden, I can think of several of our parks that have the space for it, so yeah, I love that, but the other ideas are great as well. Nice job.
Thank you.
Well, the only thing I was gonna pitch in on the garden piece is that we've also got both Rice and Istone have their own gardens. And I know the Boys and Girls Club has those planters too, so we've also got three other locations that could be tied in to the gardening aspect of that.
Do you know how many, uh, volunteer hours are required? It's significant, I can, uh, my, my daughter did the bronze award last year. It's like, it's like, uh, a lot of hours required.
It's a minimum of seventy-five?
Yeah, oh, okay, that's it.
This counts any work that she's done and communicated over the last two years of getting to this point and saying, I'm going to do this in the next year, but, um.
That's a lot of hours.
It is.
Yeah.
It also counts like any setup, like if she brings other Girl Scouts into it, like if there's an actual, put a garden in, which is maybe a big, big project like we talked about, it would be her responsibility to present the silver award ideas to Girl Scouts of Colorado and get it approved. Um, that's where, one of the big difference between bronze and silver is presenting her idea then to Girl Scouts of Colorado, saying, I've done this, I'm gonna build upon it, I've brought in more community members, maybe there's a fundraising piece, maybe it's lots of research in other municipalities, I think this is how it works, I mean, some projects are a little smaller and some projects are a little bigger, depending on how many Girl Scouts, um, are involved in it. So like, if you have three Girl Scouts, it's a lot of hours, but you also get a much bigger project.
Yeah.
Um, the gold award, to answer that question, is four years worth of work and, and putting in similar to an Eagle Scout project. So it would be, it could be an extension of, and certainly Girl Scouts of Colorado wouldn't stop that, but there's gonna have to be a whole separate set of parameters and high level fundraising, presenting years of, of work. So, um, the key there is carrying on like she talked about, they call it sustainability, it's not just gardening and green stuff.
Yeah.
But it's websites or it's communication within food banks, it's something that's lasting that then this board or the city could take on. And even future Girl Scouts could grow that project even more. So the goal is to really not just community service for your community, but grow your.
That's wonderful.
Um, so that's the huge, that take action piece for these three awards is what makes it the top award. Oh, so it could be her responsibility to do just a ton of research and go to the Board of Trustees, it could be understanding Boys and Girls Club, like that would be her first steps working with them and her. So that's kind of that silver versus kind of backing up to the bronze.
Yeah.
Bronze is the same.
The little ones, yeah.
It's a, it's a cool way to graduate into hopefully the hardest award that you can get.
Yeah.
Which means.
Those gold projects are like change the world type projects. Yeah, I would listen to.
Only about two percent of scouts will get their gold award.
Yeah.
Um, because you really gotta understand the needs and connect a lot of people.
I mean, I think you're kind of poised perfectly because there are some real specific needs for our community right now that you, you are in a perfect position. If the ultimate goal is to earn a gold badge, then picking something and being really specific and, and continuing to brainstorm, what are those ideas for silver that then are gonna be that community changing thing that Wellington needs for, if you want to continue with that gold badge.
What are some next steps? How can we help? I mean, I think, I think you're hearing from everybody, we wanna help, we want to, whatever program that you wanna move forward with, and I wanna make sure we support you in, in how you wanna do that. And I know you have to submit soon.
Yeah, so the next step would be to get the paperwork and submit it to GSCO. Then really just making the plan of what we would do and finding a way to fundraise it.
So backing up from that, I think that this word, like when you talked about connections, is there someone specific to hone in on a project, maybe? Like not just submitting it, right, that is your next step, but how do you get to submitting it, and I think is what Lauren was talking. We, we wanna support you and we're not completely sure either, so I'm kind of guessing that maybe you can review these, these project ideas. And then I don't know if you wanna reach back out, we can expand upon it, if you wanna come back and present, um, we can help you talk more about your project at, at our next meeting. I think we're pretty open to how well we can support you. So one thing that you might walk away from here is taking several ideas and honing in on what you're gonna work on and how you might do that. So that's probably your question back to the group is do, does the group need thirty days to think about it and then decide next month what it is that you really want to tackle?
Is it up to us, that this board?
Yeah.
Ultimately, it, it is because you would be the community partner that she.
Oh, okay.
Um, but if she doesn't have interest in it, we should have a conversation. But ultimately, if, if we feel like really working on gathering information and making a presentation, she can put together that program, present it to you and Girl Scouts of Colorado both, like this is what I'm gonna work on and then start to go on to those other steps. Or, I mean, I think lower water, like I'm here for it, some love garden, like all of it. So I think there's what do you want to work on?
Yeah.
And I, knowing you and as a single Girl Scout, any of those would be not bad for her. So if there's a, a specific need, that was the point is what are the needs? And she'll go to work to try to help this board do that, when she is the facilitator, you know, for to put together all the things.
So in that case, and I'm just throwing this out there, for you, if this is going to be something that you're putting this amount of time and energy into, while we have needs, it also needs to be something that you are passionate about, because otherwise that drive is not, is hard to come by.
Yeah.
You know, it's better if it's something that really kind of lights a fire for you, that makes you excited about what you can give to your community. Um, and then maybe the other part is, and I, I could be totally backwards on this, but the way that my brain thinks is let's talk about what we want the finished project to be and then let's work backwards from there on one of the steps to get us there.
Are you looking for a recommendation tonight? Would that be helpful? You only have thirty to sixty days.
In our next meeting is in thirty, well, I guess in twenty-one days.
Certainly, yeah. So let me expand on that, from a half to submit it and support it as a Girl Scout here. Um, the goal is that she has to have it done before she's done with middle school, so September first, two thousand and twenty-five is when she can no longer achieve the silver award, because middle school's over. So ultimately, if Girl Scouts push back and says you need to do more, she would just have to be communicating with them, she set that deadline for herself.
Oh, good.
There is.
Good planning.
So it's a deadline.
There is not, there is, August thirty-first is the deadline where you cannot, she cannot because of aging out achieve this award anymore. It would be like, oh, we're under our goal, like, which isn't bad, you just roll it into that, right? Um, but that was a self-imposed deadline.
You don't have to answer this question right now, but you're a middle schooler in Wellington, right now. If you think about your time growing up in this community, think about things that maybe you wish had been here or that wish you'd had access to that you think would be beneficial.
Yeah.
To you and your age group.
That's why I'd like, um, with my previous projects, like I briefly talked about it, like I had reached out to Rice about putting in a buddy bench, because at my old school, Fort Collins, they had one and the Rice had it, so I thought like it could be beneficial to the students there. They needed a buddy, they sat down on a bench, got a buddy.
Do you like bringing people together like that? Um, there's another major problem that kind of Wellington has is we don't have a lot of gathering spaces. Up door, like where people can just get together, not necessarily at school, but just in public. Um, and that, that would be very welcomed and is a big deal. I'm putting out more options, I don't think.
No, that's okay, I'm just trying to, trying to figure out how we would align that, help, help align that with an actual project, that's a big ask and need. Uh, and it has been already deemed as something that we need to look forward to in the new strategic plan, you know, what do we call it, plan? But, I mean, you know, all those things that we have, um, said as far as potential projects could lean into those issue, I'm not, you know, we can absolutely try to tie in water and community gardens, you know, so, show how important it is to save water but still grow on your own rather than.
Yeah.
You know, certain plants take less water, that kind of stuff, the educational piece is really what we're trying to do and outreach to the community, right? It wouldn't be building anything until a gold or expanding that project, it's really just, you know, just trying to wrap my mind around what would kind of drive this all forward with what it is that you really want to do. Cause I really like what Sarah said, if you're, you know, if you're not passionate about it, it's not something that necessarily you're gonna want to be doing, this is something that you really want to do, right? You wanna have drive to do it and align the community necessities, so.
And the cool thing is, because she's one of the oldest Girl Scouts in this community, it's maybe gonna take on the, the Daisy Brownie group, um, she'll, she'll grow other Girl Scouts and other opportunities and hand things off. So like, whereas like bring, like the buddy bench was of sixth grade, all of sixth grade, trying to, trying to do that. Sometimes you learn more from that than you do other things, but, um, she may help, if we go with the community garden idea, she may help get all of the pieces in place and educate people and that counts. Cause that's, that's enough for Girl Scouts of Colorado, truly. If there's enough work in there, I think, based on what I've heard and read and what we've looked at. But then to say, you know what, that's cool, it's going, you've got it, but I'm gonna work on something else any year. So, that may be the reality that, yeah, we think this could be, but in all reality, you all may just give her and show her research and present some things and go to work over the next six months and you grow it and then she does something else for this community.
Fantastic.
It will be, so Wellington is the thing that she will be a part of, whether it's Ross and space or playpens, I don't know, it was big, but seems like there's a lot of opportunities in this building too, but too big for a middle schooler.
Yeah, sure. You have the opportunity to leave a legacy, which is, that's amazing.
So what, what do you? In order to move forward in the next thirty days, if I'm gonna be at the next meeting. Do you kind of wanna just kind of think through some of these options, maybe reach out to, um, Billy or I and let us know kind of where you're headed? Um, and then we can talk about, um, you know, um, a, a future presentation and how we can continue to support you.
Sure. This is early planning, but as soon as it's two thousand and twenty-five, you should submit a grant request to the Board of Trustees for discretionary funds. And they, and if you bring that same presentation, um, um, some of those grants go up to twenty-five hundred dollars, so please keep that in mind as well.
Thank you for coming tonight and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much, we look forward to working with you.
You're welcome, stay and hang out for the rest of the meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, next item up is the WCP, our memorial update.
Let me get back to the top, um, you know, this is one thing that we said we would put on every agenda just because it's, you know, the large project going on. Um, we have moved Earth over there, uh, you know, there's until we kind of take the next step, which would be for us to actually have the full plan, full funding and everything. Um, I think maybe we just continue to expand the marketing and work on that piece of it. Um, but Jim and crew have moved quite a bit of dirt and got it to a place where, um, you know, we feel comfortable with it sitting there as long as it's gonna take for us to get the funding to move forward with the full amount of the project, so, um, huge thanks to them, but at the same time. Uh, yeah, you can just exit the back there, yeah, that one was fully locked. Um, and I think, I think now might be the time, um, well, maybe at the next meeting when we have a, a full, full board to really sit, who's, you know, who's gonna be in charge of the fundraising, see if we can get some other community partners involved with the fundraising group, maybe outside of the pros board, we kind of set that little subcommittee and just start moving forward. We, you know, we, we had success with, um, the silent auction, we've got a couple of different donations. Um, so we've got, you know, we've got some money moving forward, um, not a huge amount, but it's, it's a start. And I think, I think the next big step is really to get, get the funding going, so, um, as proposed by the board and my next step is really to get the, those dollar amounts out and make sure that we have what, when we hand it out, um, what people will be pushing towards, you know, when they're, when they're donating their funds. Thoughts, ideas?
Uh, you know, I think just getting the word out as much as we can, right? Um, so if we can get the town, um, for, through social media to make the posts, I think everybody else can continue to share and push it out there, let's talk Wellington, all the groups, businesses. Um, I know we have a poster hung up at our shop, um, I went over, T-Bar's got a bunch of them posted up over there, I think if we can get more of these posted around town, people can scan it, they can look at the QR code and they can learn more about the project. Um, this other one, same thing, um, it just shows the project, um, where it's going. Um, so however, I think we can just continue to get the word out as much as possible.
Can you print those? Can we take them with us?
Yeah, absolutely, and we can get, I can get you as many as I want. And one of the goals too that I discussed internally is i- if we can, every month, making a, a little different and, and re-handing them out, because when you walk into your shop, the T-Bar, wherever that is, if you, you just glaze over it, if it looks exactly the same all the time, but even if it's got the same verbiage, if the, if it looks different or a little bit different verbiage, I think we're gonna catch more eyes that way, that's just.
Has that been made in Pamba? Is there an easy way to share that to resize it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I have two, two things on this. Uh, if we haven't reached out to Jenny and David Brown with the global war on, well, they're not that anymore, what is their name, is it? Global War on Terror, so Jenny and David Brown are the ones who brought the big memorial wall to Old Colorado a couple of years ago. David is the original designer of that wall, he and Jenny have done a ton of work on it. They are currently working on a new brand of that wall, um, that, that's mobile. But this is something that they're super passionate about and there is no reason that we shouldn't ask one of them to sit, if not both, to sit on the subcommittee.
Absolutely.
And get them involved in it. Um, I think that with Veterans Day, um, sorry. Yeah, I'm right, Veterans Day is in November, yes. With Veterans Day coming up, we should do some real campaigning and marketing around this with that time of year. And we have our big mingle on mains that the downtown businesses are really focusing. And there's no reason that we couldn't maybe for the November, um, mingle on main focus our downtown businesses and the people coming downtown onto this project. Whether it's having poster boards and things set up at Old Colorado, whether it's having donation jars at all the downtown businesses and someone from our committee station talking to people or veterans in our community with our American Legion talking to people, the, the face to face is going to make the difference.
Absolutely.
And so there's no reason that we shouldn't utilize some of those events that are already taking place.
Yeah.
To push this and get that out.
And, and I love that, and that's, you know, that's where the activism from the group comes, we have, um, the ability at all the town events that we're involved in to definitely put it out there and work through those channels, though we have so many going on. Anytime there's something like mingle on main like that, that's where this group really needs to catch a hold of that, I absolutely love. I absolutely love that idea, whatever we can do internally to support that, it's fantastic.
I mean, we're also looking for someone to kind of lead a committee on fundraising.
I just, I mean, I think that that's, uh, my husband's also a veteran, so you know, there's. And I know a lot of some other veterans in the community, and I think that that's something that. The more we talk about that community and we engage them and we feel like we've created an environment for them to feel supported in. Something like that.
It's what it's for and it's for, right?
It also creates a gathering space for our community, it hits another like.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
That's why it was, it was presented that way as a place, not just for a memorial, but a place for people to go and gather and also. Pay respects, but also a place for people to feel comfortable and free and maybe do some classes or speaking and stuff like that. It's all of that encompassed, right?
And Jen and, Jen and David are huge, that's a huge part of what they do is educate. And I think that something like this, they've been kind of looking to dig their teeth in a little bit when it comes to things like this, um. I also know that Slurps recently just posted that they are hosting fundraising events. That that's something that they're gonna look at supporting, and so it may, that hits another target out of our downtown. But maybe connecting with Slurps about doing a fundraising event for that, at their business.
Um, well, we had talked about, you know. Giving people or having people be voted to lead some committees of people that sit outside this board, but can definitely support this board and. I don't know who we're forward with anything, since we don't have all of our members here, but.
We, we need to, we need to make some progress and make the goings, that'd be great. I'll reach out to Jenny and David if that's available to anybody. And I can also bring it to our mingle on main group.
I have two things also, um, based on what the money has been raised at. Uh, American Legion, it would be a great opportunity for a social media post saying, thank you to American Legion for participating. We raised this much money, because people see that and they're like, I would have given money to that. And then, and then they will reach out and like let people know this is how you can participate, if you wanna volunteer.
The new version of what we come up with for that as the.
It's the same kind of thing, brand new content for those posts, but that's a really good one because, um, it like, it almost challenges people. They're like, I didn't know we could do that, I would, that's what I heard a lot of people, they're like, I didn't know I could give to that. So.
Have an image that shows our goal and how it's being raised.
Not yet.
That's what we're working.
That's what we need to work on as a group. All ideas are good ideas when a.
And maybe that's where we tie in, you know, we don't necessarily have to change the body of what we're showing, but every month when we print new posters. Hey, look, this is where we stand now, this is our goal, and we're showing, even if they're tiny increments, we're still showing progress. And we're showing that things are happening behind the scenes, and that is more engagement for me.
And then the other suggestion I had is when you're moving dirt, that's the best time for a groundbreaking. Events, like bring people, have a gold shov- shovel, do the photo ops, you have way more content as well. So, and I don't know if that has to be like a super organized thing, but.
Do you think, cause we will be moving earth, but I think there'll be a lot more moving of it, once we, you know, get the funding, there'll be. Some more layers put on top of it and. We still have to do compaction testing on every layer, so I think there, you know, we could be months away, we could be a year away, we don't know until we really get the funding going. So, um, if it's just.
That could be a Veterans Day activity.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, cause we still have more dirt to bring in, but let's forget it to the right elevations, yeah. Did we get the five oh one C three going for that?
No, and I'm going to.
Because we need a place to be able to house the money that we want to.
In certain respects, yes.
How much are we looking to raise? I should know this already, I'm sorry.
It's still up in the air, cause, yeah.
Do we have plans for what the Finnish memorial is supposed to look like? I've seen them, I'm sorry, I just haven't.
Who's designing it?
Uh, so this is the project that we worked on for six, eight years. Um, so originally the design came about from a, a town employee, um, Jim Miller had. Um, said, you know, gosh, I hear some, my thoughts on it, um, and we had worked on placement, um. John and I worked through that with, with placement where, where we'd best fit into a park. Um, and so we've kind of continued to, to work on that, so that this board has been part of the design to kind of have that set. Um, again, with a vision of it being a plaza, um, and so we have the renderings out there. We've been working with the, the surveyors and stuff like that, now we're at the point where we need to do the fundraising. Figuring out what the town is gonna be, what parts the town is willing to do, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, as far as, um, you know, getting it up to grade and irrigation and. Yes, what pieces of it we'll be able to do in-house versus, yes. Versus, um, contracted and or.
So I think that's where we're still kind of figuring some of that out, and then obviously, um.
And then it's been discussed throughout the whole time about putting it through in pieces. Cause we want, won't be able to just attack the whole thing at once, so if we get, you know, the general wall, the platters, benches, and then we can evolve from there. Do more sophisticated design, something that we'd rather see as the end product. I think is also another piece of the fundraising where we've talked before about finding out at what donation level you get certain items. And can we have it named and engraved or anything like that, so it's another piece that we still need to figure out.
You know who's really good at putting together, together fundraising tiers is Megan Larson, and she's gonna hate me for mentioning her name. But she is really good when it comes, she's helped put on Brew Fest and. When we did the point five K and other events, so she has been really good with us, uh, with OCB at working through. Volunteer like levels for sponsors and Mick, her husband, is a veteran and part of the American Legion. So there's also that tie-in. And she does marketing.
Awesome things, that's pretty cool.
Thank you for catching me up.
Yes.
Yeah, but there'll be a lot of catch up.
Yeah, and I will probably have a lot of questions, I'll apologize ahead of time.
No, that's okay, and, and we can always sit down, you know, um, we have an opening as well, one, one opening, and we've done interviews outside of this, so. Per a potential, um. Um, Board of Trustees agreement and, and moving forward at their next meeting, um, next week.
Extra person for help, for sure.
One, one more person will be on, so there, I'm just, there's gonna be more catch up and more, more time to do, uh, a lot of this talk, but. If you wanna take on the. On race and peace.
I don't wanna step on toes though, if people, uh, cause I know that people have been working on it for a long time.
Also, part of the reason that when you interviewed, it's part of the, the, you know. Vast amount of experience that you can help bring to this group is something, we all have our passions and our experiences and I think coming together is like. Will help, but you, you go ahead and leave this because that's what you like to do and you gotta get together, so.
Are the Friends of Prost available tomorrow at two or three?
Is that us?
It's these two I'm looking at.
I'll be off till five, I'm in Johnson. I get back to Wellington about five thirty.
It would be a call too, just so everybody knows, but it's still after, okay.
Maybe two, but I have a dentist playing soccer football.
Okay. Um, Friday anytime?
I'm the same, every day after five.
Okay. After five thirty.
Well, five thirty a person, five on the phone. Yeah, for everybody's safety.
I can make five more on Friday.
Okay, I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Um, so for, um, are we good to move on guys? Um, so Prost, uh, member individual park updates, so what we had talked about at the last meeting was. Um, you know, having board members, right, that would go and visit the different park. Um, that they were kind of assigned or they had chosen, um, it's a good time to meet with the community members. Um, to see if there's anything that needs added, see how people are using things, how we can support the community. And then also if there's anything that we need to bring to, uh, Billy's attention. Um, so I'll start, uh, we had talked about, um, I had Wellington Community Park. Such a fun park, obviously, um, heavily used, um, for walking, so, um, I've. You know, we've got the, what the splash pad and got the playgrounds, all the things, it's, it's super fun. Um, couple of the things I was noticing that might need, um, more attention at some point and, um. The side box will need an update, it is so heavily used, um, so we might have to have that in our future plans for. Updates, right?
Yeah, there's a couple of areas that have been identified, um, as needing either. Knocked out and repoured or mud jacked or stuff like that because of settling and bed night clay, yada, yada, I don't know. Um, so that has been identified and we do, um, we do have a, you know, some budget for things like that. I think there are some more pressing parks for that, but it is something that is absolutely. Look into, yeah.
Yeah, otherwise I think the park is, you know, generally in, in good shape. Um, if we would want to add anything, I think it would be probably some seeding down at the fields, right?
Yeah, and it was discussed about maybe some, a little bit more canopy shade up by the splash pad, right? And that's something that definitely is on the radar, I think, you know, we kind of all agree that it's awesome, but maybe there were some more pressing needs. But it's something that's on the future map, but. That's what we need, right? We need things like that, that, when we check our parks that come back to me, so I know what I'm looking for.
Yes.
So, talking about WCP, has anybody seen the guy who parks in the, um, handicap approach at the, um, dog park? And it's, it's quite regular, he actually parks in the wheelchair rail. I don't know if there's like bollards or anything or something we can do, but he's there all the time.
Okay.
So, I did notice that. But my parks were Sunset, uh, Park Meadows and Wellville. And, uh, I just did a brief this month, I, I went through them, uh, there's not anything that's physically wrong with them. I did go later in the evening, so there wasn't a lot of use at the time, um, there were a few kids at Sunset, um, playing around. But the other two parks were pretty vacant, um. I guess the only other thing would be just the underpass again, cause it does lead right to Wellville. My kids even sometimes will get on the other side of the interstate and call me up, can you just come pick me up, I don't wanna go through there, I'm like, alright. We get the truck out, so. It is dim, have you been down there recently?
No. Yeah, the lighting was upgraded, oh, underneath, yes. There, uh, I haven't been under there at night yet, maybe I'll take a venture over there, I, I saw it installed. And I saw them in action, so there was a little bit of daylight still, um. But it's been noted that you can see from end to end now, so I think the splash is probably about four times as great as what it was. For, so.
The flooding is definitely an issue there, uh, that's probably.
On the radar, one thing that is always brought up and needs to be remembered though is that is what it's designed for. It's designed for external floodway, um, it's a bonus that it's an underpass, but that is really how that was designed. As far as that goes down, um, you know, there have been discussions about getting a, a bigger pump and all that, it's a lot of infrastructural changes to be able to do that, but. Um, it is unfortunate, and I hate to say that, but like, when people complain about it, it is a way for us to say, really. When that was put in, it wasn't like, hey, this is gonna be a main thoroughfare, it turns out that our trails are always there and our parks are getting more use. So we have to design around that, but the initial design wasn't necessarily for it to be high, heavy traffic.
On that note then, is there a plan, and I know it's a nightmare. To add us another, like, uh, for real underpass. And I know that we can do very little about the bridge over I twenty-five, I know that these are all like hot topics. But, you know, when I talk to people, so we used to live on the other side, we lived right on McClellan, right by that park and the underpass. And everybody I know who still lives over there, they struggle when they want to come into town. And they need to visit any of our businesses, whether it's sparge and slurps or whether it's downtown here. That there is no feasible way, and when, when they look at that underpass, which is technically for the flooding. As their way to get across, that we are, we're seeing that separation of our community, our community is east and west.
Yeah, I think that would be, um, you know, obviously. Directly tied to parks and transportation from park to park, side to side, students to school, all that kind of stuff, people to commerce. But something that'll probably be tackled in the transportation master plan potentially, um, maybe.
Yeah, uh, I can let you know also that they are going to be doing a safety study of the I twenty-five interchange. And part of that is pedestrian safety over interstate right there, so I don't think we're gonna get great safety scores there. Um, but that's a long-term project, but that, I just wanna let you guys know that that's been acknowledged, and they're, they have it on their plan. We're considering somebody to do preliminary design, so we can start chasing federal grants. So, I was gonna put that in my other one, but this is pertinent to this conversation, so, yeah, um, but, I mean. Let's plan for something soon.
Our community is struggling to feel connected, and that we have a very specific board, like. Middle road down our community.
I know, like, the whole overpass in, in general is gonna be really expensive, but has anybody looked into a pedestrian overpass, just specific for walking the bikes?
No, that's what I'm saying too, for, for pedestrian overpass, it's been this, discussed, yeah, yeah. And I think that would probably be encompassed into a transportation plan as well, because that's something that. You know, but. Maybe they would go with the route over where it is now for pedestrians, but. You know, still that's out of the way for a lot of people, I think it has been discussed and I've heard the potential, I'm not saying that is on any plan anywhere. But it's something that is like, you, you know, the underpass isn't designed for it, the overpass isn't, no matter what, even if you make it extremely safe. It's all the way on, you know, the far side, if you're on the south side of town, how do you get up the frontage road, so like somewhere in the middle, doing an, an overpass? Just something that's been thrown out there that I've heard.
I'll take it back, just as a, an idea, so thank you for bringing that up. Cause it, it's not on the radar whatsoever, from what I've ever heard from the board perspective, so.
Adjacent questions, but do we wanna go back to the parks, I can give you my update on my parks, um. So, when Nick, I went and did kind of a poll assessment. This, I felt very official, I brought my six-year-old, he's like, Mom, I didn't know this was your job, and he was very excited to help me out. So we walked the whole park, I think, um, it's, it's very well maintained. I think that park in particular has a lot of green space that if we go with the community. Um, garden idea, like, there's a lot that could be done with that space, um, there's no real. Updates, there was a little bit of graffiti I saw on one of the, uh, stools, um, but nothing major. That park is used for a lot of birthday parties, I don't know if any of you have been to view, so there's one covered picnic area. I mean, there's potential for more, I think it could, I think it could have more, um, so that's just an idea, but aside from that, that park's in great shape. Um, I even checked out the water pot there and it was clean and I was like. And then the other one is the Knolls Linear, and that one I have not walked, um, that's the one across from Rice. We just did a bunch of tree removal or like, right?
A lot of tree work.
Yeah, so I will, I'll do that before the next meeting, but I don't know that there's much, and there's the disc golf that's being updated in that park. Yeah, so, so I'll walk that one next, but I think that one's in.
And, um, it's not on the agenda, but, uh, we are talking about that, cause, uh. Now that we finalized the purchase of the dock with the PO has been set in, um, we can then. Or we, we know we'll recover our fees for the dock, so we're moving forward with the disc golf officially, and I have a signed contract, it's just. getting a date set. So once I kind of continue that conversation and, um, the pieces are in place, I'll definitely keep you guys up to date on what we're looking at. Because that's going to be, um, a fun project for everybody to be involved in when we do that with the disc golf. But, uh, it's not on here, but pertinent to the Knolls Linear.
Okay. My other questions were maybe, maybe about Sage Ralph and, um, there's been some questions about the Sage Meadows, um, access to the middle, middle high school. But I had another thought about, and this may fall under transportation, um, GW Bush and installing some kind of school zone along that.
I have an opportunity for everyone.
Um, is, does that fall under transportation? So if we've got the, well, we've got the school zone on Third Street, right? Along Rice. But there's a lot of kids that travel from Sage Meadows and from across GW Bush. And so I don't, I don't know where that fits, but it's something that I wanted to bring up.
I, I don't want to take up time with it, but I'll distribute a survey because Laramie County is doing a very in-depth survey about multimodal, uh, transportation. And they're asking for us to, I did share this form for specific for her reasons, um, uh, to drop a pin everywhere you have a problem or concern.
Oh, cool.
And they're going to be actually like quantifying that and then putting that in their plans.
Right.
Okay.
I, I will distribute that. And so it's everything Laramie County and put it everywhere where a trail is supposed to be. I think that would be a great choice to do in that plan too, if you want to talk like that, but I'll get that link out to everyone.
Great. I have one, just one more, when you're talking about the parks, um, and I'm sure this has been brought up, but having more tennis pickleball courts, the specific pieces, um, only because I recently started taking the adult tennis lessons through the rec program and we're having so much fun. But you're limited with where you can go to play. And then from what I'm, and correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on this. When you go to the Wellington Community Park, there are the two courts. One of them has pickleball lines painted on it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That's what I thought, which is if you can easily play tennis on either of those, it's not a big deal. But I know that it might be fun to have a little more, especially as we have a middle school now and a high school and there are middle school and high school students out practicing. We're going to see more.
Yeah.
At that.
And, and it's definitely with the increase in pickleball also creates, um, we, we, we've been pretty lucky so far. We're navigating that as a recreation and, and parks department, really the recreation side. Um, cause we do the lessons through our rec program and those are actually expanding. If you're taking lessons, cause now Kim is offering more lessons, which is amazing. Um, but you know, trying to stay in communication with, um, the pickleball community, cause we know when they play to let them know when we, we have lessons and stuff and they'll call in and make sure that they're not in conflict. Uh, but one thing that I don't know, um, if everybody here knows, I'm, I'm sure the longer standing members do is that we can't host any sort of tennis tournament through the town of Wellington, because USTA will not allow any sort of markings on their courts except for tennis. So we can't bring anybody in. Both of the courts have markings. Actually, there's four, there's the two on the, on the, uh, west one, but there's actually in the middle of it, you can see one that you can play over the net. So, so it's, it's kind of a conflict, um, on, on both ends, right? We want to, we want to improve our pickleball because there's a lot of players. We have, um,
Yeah, there's a whole.
urgent and community of pickleball players here and we want to support that. But it also inhibits our ability to bring in people from the outside to play tennis, um, and, and host an event or co-host with the middle school, high school. We just can't. So it's kind of that conflict and at, at some point, um, you know, we talked about new parks and new spaces. It's like, well, some of that has to be incorporated in some of it too. So.
Okay.
Yep. Updates, right? You gotta, gotta get you up to speed.
There is a nice vacant area north of the courts now that we could definitely fix a more in. Just need the money to do it. So I could see another two going in there.
Yeah. It would be nice if you contained a pickleball to all, like one set.
Yeah, and it would, yeah.
And I'm sure that's kind of the vision. I, I had to laugh because we showed up for lessons the other night and there were pickleball people there, but they were playing on the tennis court. Not on the pickleball side with the lines. And we were like, oh, whatever. We'll just, you know, we were just playing around, but I was like, you know, if, if something's designed for you, we can't.
Adapt.
We can't, yeah, we.
And that's the thing, it was adapted to it. We don't want to adapt. We want to design things for people that are playing something so heavily. So.
So when we talk about grant funding, how do we go about looking for grants? Is that something that, and if I'm out of line with the agenda, please?
Might be a little bit. We do probably need to stick in and maybe this is a conversation where we put up on a different agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, because it is a large subject, um, because we have multiple things we can look for grants for. So maybe, um, add that to the next agenda, which is part of the agenda, just to add things to the agenda. So mark that for G, it's G tonight. So mark that for the future convo.
Um, Aaron, are you still with us?
Yes.
Did you have a chance to go over to Viewpoint?
I sure did. Yep. Um, I wanted to con, first compliment Billy on his staff. I mean, that, that park does look good. Like you can tell they take pride in mowing and trimming and, and they make it look as good as it can. Now, as good as it can is like the tennis courts, the basketball courts. Um, I, I mean, obviously it's on our list to, to get resurfaced. Um, and it doesn't get a ton of use. Um, you know, it's just kind of an out of the way park, but, uh, it is a nice park. I, I would like to, I mean, it was clean, trash picked up, the playground equipment looked good. Um, what was the plan on that path that goes behind Sage Meadows? And kind of dead ends right at the park?
That's HOA.
So they dead ended at the park. Um, it, it, was there ever a plan for us to extend that path?
Well, uh.
Those houses to the?
Not specifically, cause technically all of Viewpoint Park is of, of flood management. Yeah. So, um, that's something again, just like what we're doing over at, uh, Wellville with any sort of dog park or anything, we definitely would have to go through, um, some sort of permitting. But, um, I like the idea. Thank you for, for bringing that up. That their connection there, um, is that, that's all HOA maintains. So, but connecting to that wouldn't be the only HOA that we connect with. So.
Okay, okay. Yeah, but I mean, it, it looks good. I can't wait to get, I think that, you know, kind of piggybacking on the conversation that was just being had with the tennis courts versus, uh, pickleball court. I mean, it's, I think it gets kind of frustrating for both Billy playing next to a bunch of pickleball people. Um, tennis balls coming into our courts. We just can't have it. I'm just kidding.
I see you out there.
So, um, but yeah, I, I'd like, I like the idea of, you know, pickleball takes up. So they, I mean, you could put, put four courts on a tennis court. So, or yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what we'd play on a little bit bigger than the tennis court, you know, the, the one with the lines. But I still think a, a, a space with permanent nets. So you don't have to have a, you know, some, you don't have to go out and spend a hundred and fifty bucks on a net. There's just that space. What's the, so explain to me on the viewpoint, the, the HOA, um, so I mean, the goalposts that are there, like that's all HOA put that in?
No, no, no. Just the, just the trip we're talking about on the, on the far south side.
Okay.
All that space, basically top of hill where that tree line is, um, and anything to the south, including the pond is all still HOA maintained.
Okay, okay.
Including the trail itself.
What's the long-term plan for those goalposts? I mean, are they being used? Are they?
Schedule, we have, um, a semi-professional rugby team that uses them spring and fall. We have six, six rugby games scheduled already this year.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering what the future was of course.
Yep.
They're awesome. And we, we try to, they coordinate with, uh, youth, use football so that the park is hopping on Saturdays.
Yeah.
In two weeks.
It's a great space for soccer too.
It is.
And the ref uses that field, right?
Oh yeah, we reprogram that. Really the, that's the, that's our largest field. Um, so that's why we have to have rugby there and that's why we have to have football, cause we can't do all three soccer fields. And rugby at the same time, but we do do our summer program when that runs at Viewpoint. Summer soccer program, I should say.
Viewpoint's kind of a neat little, it's a hidden gem in a lot of ways. And I, it's, you know, we live in Sage Meadows, so we butt right up to that. And, uh, same thing with the trail. It was, it kind of was one of those where like, oh, well, it just died there. But, um, I wondered about that space. Like is there space for tennis courts or pickleball courts there? You know, is, is that an option? Or maybe, you know, I don't know how highly the basketball courts are.
Um, well, we, we have talked about redoing the surfacing on that as one of our projects. Um, you know, quotes came in quite a bit higher than we wanted. I think the lowest one that we were hoping to be around the 20,000 mark. And I think the lowest one we got was like 33 up to like 65,000 to redo it. So that's maybe like something that we were, we're happy about, but then all of a sudden we're like, wow, that's kind of a lot to redo that for a park that we don't know. We've all talked about, and it's been brought up even previous to me. When do we redo that part? Because the whole, the whole theme of it might need to be redone. So are we going to stick $30,000 into a park that might be used for a few years? And do we know the outcome of that? So, um, the playground structure needs to do. So that's one of the things where we're like, well, let's reel some stuff back, push the master plan out and see really how we're going to move forward. And then once we have a directive that says pickleball needs to go on Viewpoint Park, you know what we're going to do? We're going to push for pickleball on Viewpoint Park. But that's why, you know, we've had that discussion about master plan first and then kind of step back on some of the projects that we had all agreed on, but doesn't necessarily dictate what the community, you know, pull on.
Yeah. Okay.
Digression.
Thank you, Aaron.
You're welcome.
Um, Robert's not here tonight, so next meeting we'll definitely hit on Centennial and Harvest.
And then maybe redistribute some with new members?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that would be great. Um, and we, yeah, uh, we'll see.
Yeah. And this is my time to say, when you're out there, shoot me a text. You've guys got my number. Hey, there's graffiti here. Well, you know, when we don't, um, you know, our staff sometimes doesn't see it when they're out there or kids might throw a jacket over it or whatever it is. If you see it, let us know, you know, um, not just graffiti, but,
Yeah.
um, you know, obviously the maintenance things we'll get to as far as mowing and trimming. Hey, the grass is long. Well, it hasn't been mowed this week, but you can always tell me that and I'll tell you the same thing I just did. But if there's, if there's a problem like I saw, you know, we're not there at seven o'clock at night, you're there, there's a broken swing first thing in the morning, or I'll call off someone who's on call because that's a safety issue. I love the input. Never, never hurts my feelings. It's just what, what we do. So thank you.
Um, yeah. So moving on to the trail's budget update. Oh, sorry, fishing dock. Sorry. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, kind of said it earlier, but the fishing dock PO came in from Colorado Parks and Wildlife. So we are moved forward. The dock is ordered. I do not still have a date for it to come in. It was ordered about a week, a week ago, week and a half ago. And it was six to eight weeks from the order date. So I will be knocking on the door this week to get an update of when it will be here. I know we all want to do a ceremony. Um, staff wants to do a ceremony too. So this is our time, I think, um, in pre-planning that out. Just to, what do we want to see in the event? Let's get it written down. And then as staff and promotional, we'll kind of work on that. I'll bring a plan back here. Um, there is going to have to be some flux with the timing, cause when the dock comes in, we'll have to put it in, which isn't that big of a deal, but then we also do the concrete afterwards. So I want to be as hard lined as I can with the timing and public works coming in there and doing work and getting as much of artwork done before. Um, so it's really hard to set that date because the concrete has to set. And, um, we don't know when the dock is coming, but probably buffer zone a week after we get the dock. But that, that could be wishful thinking maybe too, depending on when it is. Um, another cool thing is we might have an opportunity to restock the pond this fall, rather than just a one-time stocking. What, why yet to be determined? Uh, but there, there was that floated out there. So we're going to do some, do some research into that to get it, get it stocked about a week before we do the derby so that the fish are ready to roll. Um, so this is our opportunity to build what we want to see in that. So that we can make it happen when the time comes.
This project has been, um, in the works now for, um, five plus years. And this is brought to our attention by a past, uh, pro sport member who, uh, this, this meant a lot to them. So I'm hoping that we will be able to, um, pull Kevin back in and have him come be a part of the ceremony. Um, I had reached out to him, um, a while back and he was definitely interested. So, um, I think as we get closer to a date, we can circle back with that.
It'll be fun.
Um, yeah. So it'd be great to see Kevin again and, um, share how this, this finally is getting done. So it's exciting. Um, so we talked about ribbon cutting. Um, some of the, um, town staff had said, you know, let's do fishing, fishing line cutting.
Oh my gosh. That's hard to see, but that's awesome.
Like, can you guys kind of see where like, we can take this, you know, maybe, um, we did talk about getting, um, a food truck over there. We got maybe on the hook because that'd be funny cause special. Um, so a, anything that we can kind of come up with, like in the, you know, to make it fun. Um, I think we're pretty open. This has idea.
What is, I mean, uh, what is our target? Are we talking to, September, October? I mean, I know Billy just went through it, but.
Yeah, probably end of September.
I think, I think longest six weeks of get, it's how we get it. And then we need a couple of weeks to get everything in. That, that makes it tricky when you talk about doing it that late. When is the fishing? Do we usually help? Is that May? We don't really want to hold off that long, do we?
No. And we're usually still, I mean, you know, semi.
It can be really nice.
Yeah, yeah. So we're going to hope. And we could talk about this more offline too. Um, but as people get ideas, like, we want to make really good deal about it.
Does, is Kiwanis who puts on the fishing derby?
Yeah.
Is it worth wrapping them in to see if helping or ideas around putting the, because that they put a ton of time and energy into like having rods for the kids during the fishing derby. And maybe it's something that we ask their help with when it comes to planning.
Yeah, CPW usually is the ones that bring the, the, the rod and stuff like that. So I think we'll definitely get everybody included that wants to be part of it. I think we would have kind of like, okay, let's get kind of the, the foundation in of what this is going to be. We'll make sure everybody can.
Date's not available. Our September 14th and October 12th. Those are sparge October event days.
So not.
Yeah. So do you know, uh, September 14th, October 12th?
And October 12th. Okay.
That'd be hard to compete with.
Give them a partner. Just, just saying.
Yeah. Hmm.
Yeah.
For sure.
We wouldn't want to partner?
No, we would.
Do an early, early event on the same or?
No, because they have a big event and it's a bike, bike race and a run.
It is on the trails. I'm just thinking it is kind of in our lovely underpass.
Yeah.
But.
Not underpass.
I'm not coming up with any, I think, okay. We'll, we'll keep pushing forward and throw some ideas out there and everybody can keep just brain dumping in.
Sorry, I moved out, but like cutting a fishing line instead of ribbon cutting, instead of that first cast, all that kind of stuff.
Oh, first cast.
Yeah. And it would be wonderful to have, um, the original brainchild be the one that does the first cast. I think that'd be fantastic.
Yeah.
Fun things like that.
I think if you can do.
Do a park and play around it.
Fun little kid games, you know, like bob for fish or.
Yeah.
Swedish fish or, you know, anything along those lines.
Absolutely.
Have like fun little.
Throw them on their bob fish. Uh, you know, we'll do our park and play, but we'll get Kiwanis and maybe do, you know, uh, you know, impromptu fishing derby or something like that too.
Mm-hmm.
Since they do theirs, but invite people, for sure. Invite people in the community to come fish.
Do you think pushing for that first weekend in October is too soon?
I, I would hope not, cause I still would want, you know, we still want water to be available, obviously. And, um, usually October is absolutely gorgeous and great for fishing. Any, any further into middle end into November, we, we really want to get it done then. So yes, before the Halloween events start, cause we're involved with that. So that would be.
The fifth.
Yes, hopefully. Okay, yeah. Mark that as a, a potential and I will try to get Dave when we get in, try to push them to get it here as soon as possible with a, a week lag before at the minimum.
All trustees won't be available that day. Maybe Sunday instead.
Sunday might be better because you're also in the middle of rec season on the Saturday.
Absolutely.
Flat with all the sports.
Hmm.
We'll keep throwing it around. I know we have limited time left, um, before we need to, um, end. We'll keep throwing it around. I know we have limited time left um, before we need to um, end the meeting. And so um, we talked about the trails budget update.
Yeah, um, so we're currently going through our twenty to twenty-five iterations. All departments are going through their first um, round of budget go, so. What, what I've been really doing is trying to maintain our operating budget as much as possible, not really going for any increases or anything like that. We operate very well with what we have. A few minor tweaks that we need to do, you know, the small things that we need to do. One of the things that I'm um, gonna potentially propose is um, um, has to do with uh, Fort Collins and their inability to, not their inability, I shouldn't say that, that's not how I should put that. It's their change of policy for what they do for um, their service area and how um, residents from outside the city of Fort Collins aren't gonna be able to have reduced fee programs in Fort Collins anymore. Their service area is shrinking directly to Fort Collins. Um, that's nothing that we can lobby or do anything with. It's been a thing that's um, actually was mandated, I believe, in twenty-one or twenty-two. And recreation was the very last service department to continue to offer services outside their new service area boundaries. So they've actually done more of a service to the recreation community than they have. Um, then they actually were needed to, they lobbied to keep that going because they know um, you know, of the surrounding communities, that their, the recreation facilities, they have support so many people. So, so offering those subsidized programs for people who might need that funding. Um, they've done a fantastic job. That's gonna end in twenty twenty-five, so I'm working with them to try to figure out a way that we can potentially help support our residents i- in programs that we just absolutely cannot offer. Uh, more to be determined, but that's just one of the things on the plate that will change operationally for us. Because we don't want to, um, I, I personally don't want to have services that we just don't have infrastructure and are potentially um, you know, let, let's just say one instance is swimming lessons. We can't provide swimming lessons and those are life-saving measures that kids in our community wouldn't necessarily be able to do in Fort Collins, because they might not have the full funding from their family and they get that subsidized program from Fort Collins. So we need to really be strongly thinking about that as a community to be able to um, give those quality of life and life-saving um, opportunities to everybody and be equitable, where we can't support that within our own community. Don't have any updates or anything as far as strictly what we're going to do, but I can say that we're working on that as one of our operational changes. Capital improvement, I think it goes right back to the conversation. We're looking at two specific things. We're looking at the parking wreck master plan. Hopefully tying in a community center um, uh, feasibility study with that. Um, working heavily with the d- director of Timneth. They're doing the exact same thing this year. So getting costs and also how they're working through that commonality between the two, how they co-mingle and being able to do that. We all know that the parking wreck master plan is priority number one for us. But the community really wants the, a rec center, or what we would like to pre- present as a community center, because of supporting just a rec center isn't as feasible as more supporting a community center in the future. So being able to wrap that, not necessarily in as one, but being able to push them together, because we all know the recreation program is gonna be hugely impacted by a community center, which would have a rec center, potential daycare, library, you know, facilities that we just don't offer. We would be able to offer support for recreation, be huge in that. So it wraps all in together. So still trying to work through that, but I have some um, funding option or, or funding plans for that to be presented to the board. That's the huge C I P ask. And then the other thing that we absolutely need and it's kind of got pushed off every year is just we need a new vehicle and trucks for park slash rec. And we have a new operations supervisor that needs um, um, the ability to be out in the field as well as be able to, to go to meetings and stuff. So we've needed it. It's been pushed off, so that's just one of the other huge asks I'm asking capital wise for. Other than that, um, budget doesn't suggest that we really can ask for too much larger, because right there we're kind of looking in like the two hundred and fifty range to be able to do both of those things. Um, thoughts, suggestions, that's just where um, I'm coming with in, in the first swing. Things would be pushed off would be the viewpoint up, upgrades, updates to that park, but really no reason to do any sort of large upgrades until we have a master plan done anyways. So that was already on the five years, just been pushed off a year um, on the five-year plan. And then that'll all be reevaluated when the, the master plan, hopefully. If it gets moved forward, um, gets done.
Yeah, we've been fighting for the master plan for a long time. I think it's necessary. And it tells us where to go with Centennial, with viewpoint and all the other stuff, so. I mean, we really don't want to talk many of the things that might change.
And, and that was directed that, oh, sorry, go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
Needs studied, what we need, where it needs to be.
Yeah.
A lot of that comes out of the master plan. So.
And, and when you so eloquently presented to the board, they were very understanding of where we, we wanna be. And, you know, having us have goals, it's just, you know, we don't wanna piece it together, right? We want what's needed by our community, not what we feel we know the needs, right? But what is actually needed and, and filter out the wants, put the needs in, and then hopefully we can dream for the future for the wants, if we get there.
Trustee Daley, can you give us an update when we will have a response about the master plan? Do we have?
It is all dependent on this budget being approved. I can tell you that there was significant support for it after your presentation. I think that was compelling. Um, and I also know that that was a very specific goal that we use to create a strategic plan. It showed up there multiple times. Um, so we don't have the goals out yet. That'll actually be a task for staff after we approve a strategic plan. It's like, how do we get to where we strategically wanna be? Um, so a lot of that will be determined by staff as they plan out and follow a strategic plan. So, but it was acknowledged multiple times. Um, and it was used to use one of the items that I'm gonna talk to you about the strategic plan in a second.
Yeah, and we do budget presentations and staff us. Every department head does their budget presentation to the board of trustees for adjustments and or approve, future approval, which usually comes in November.
Should on the end of the year.
Yeah.
But uh, that, that would be that meeting when we find out how that's scheduled to be a great one for you guys to attend.
Um, so um, that's kind of twenty twenty-five. Um, then I'll just take a step back to twenty twenty-four. We asked and um, we were granted uh, an increased funding for our operational side for minor park improvements. One of the things we wanted to do as discussed today was to do viewpoint, um, resurfacing. Maybe pull that off since it was such a huge dollar amount. So I would, I would just challenge you guys, maybe um, over the next uh, you know, over the next month and when we get our new members to really see where we wanna get those minor improvements. That's why you guys are at the parks, right? If we wanna put it into an, in, in large structure and more concrete over at Wellville, maybe we can do something like that. Um, that's gonna be there forever and we're not gonna change, you know, um, a s- a, a newer park like that, whatever we're looking at. I'm with ideas because we do have some of that minor improvement stuff that we can still go ahead and do. Um, you know, I use that operationally, but really that extra ask was a lot of what we had success with board engagement and saying, you know, we we have great ideas and we wanna just have a little bit more money to see some of these that would really impact the community. So that's my homework and challenges is for the twenty twenty-four budget is where, where are we now gonna see the rest of that money go that is gonna impact? So maybe bring up ideas next month. Sound good?
And we can put this off too, if you need to. I know you need to get going for something.
It's okay. Roll through this. So right now, um, as discussed, we were kind of sitting on, and I already have, uh, we, we have to discuss, but I've got the, the uh, invite out to Cody to come in, talk about trails. Um, this would be, this is actually really good timing, because Cody and I are gonna participate in Northern Colorado Trails Symposium, um, after this meeting later in September, but it'd be a great great way for us to have our information and kind of present it here on specifically on trails and maybe comprehensive plan and stuff like that, especially for new members who haven't seen comprehensive plan, um, how it aligns with parks and parks, master plan and all the fun stuff. Um, but he and I will be a, a part of that as presenters. Um, and then we're also gonna go gather a bunch of information, so hopefully we'll be able to start really dialing in the partnership between Limer County, um, city of Fort Collins, city of Fort Collins, natural areas, parks, um, their comprehensive and master plans, as well as, you know, some of the areas that we need to leverage to get connection. Um, you know, the ultimate goal is related to Fort Collins, to Wellington, to Timneth, to the Wyoming border. So we're gonna, you know, this is a really good step. We were asked to be there, so we're gonna accept and go.
Good job.
It'll be fun. Yeah. Yeah. So agenda, what, what was it earlier? I should have taken better direct notes. You're in the right space, guys. I'm sorry. Was this cell locked? Uh, I don't know what's going on with my computer right now.
Are you thinking that for um, September or into October?
Um, I would like to just put everything on September and as we get closer, we can kind of dial in what we actually wanna talk about maybe in the next two weeks. Um, I'll look at the meeting. I won't put it up here, because my computer is clearly not cooperating with this Excel sheet right now for some odd reason. So that, uh, we'll put that on the future calendar. Um, just discussion about grant writing, maybe find um, five to ten that we wanna go take a swing at. I've got a few that we will already talk about, um, on my list that I've talked internally about that I wanna reach out to. So that'll be part of that conversation. What else?
I think we should just leave Room and Kate's Alexis, um, what does come back. We can just leave a little bit of space for her. Um, whether she comes in September, October, but I'm pretty excited.
We also need to bump the whoever, which, which member was it about Centennial? We needed to present on our park update.
Oh, Robert.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, he should be here.
Yeah, and um.
We'll probably just keep park updates on.
It's like W C P, yep.
And then we can also talk about redistributing parks next month whenever we is on board.
And I apologize, Sarah, I have not sent this to you, but everybody has access to this. So all these are just whatever you wanna maybe see in the future, and then we'll parse through it before the meeting to, to know kind of where we're dialed in for that specific meeting. Um, you can put it as far in the future as you want to, if you know for a fact that it won't be something immediate that we wanna talk about. Um, and then I'll move things based on kind of where our conversation goes, or should be directed to.
Trustee Daley, you had mentioned possibly an idea.
Oh, yeah, so um, I went to see, I had this breakfast at C S U for community leaders. And they were, in part of their follow-up survey, which I responded to and said, yes, please give me more information. They were offering either faculty or staff from the extension office or from the university to be a subject matter expert or to actually serve on boards. Um, that, that doesn't work within our policy, but I mean, if somebody ever wanted to come and participate or whatever, I was just like, yes, send me more information. Um, so if I, if I hear back, I will welcome it, if that's great. They have so many resources, so many resources, so, and knowledge and contacts and so I figure it don't hurt.
We love the education piece, so if they kind of have a list of things that they can, or subjects that they would be willing to come talk to, maybe we can take a quick look and, and have them up. That'd be really cool.
Okay, if I hear about anything, I'll send it over to Billy and see if we need to schedule something or we'll put, at least put on the list so you guys can decide.
Thank you. Cool. You gonna move on announcements?
Yep. Okay, um, town staff announcement. Um, so we finally got um, in our new position, operations supervisor for Parks and Recreation. Um, Eric was promoted to that position. So he'll be filling a new role for the town, um, very much um, very engaged in all things outside operationally and also with staffing of seasonals, um, being able to train, have one specific person be able to train and be with staff all the time, both parks and rec. This is a new position, not many, and I've never really have heard of it in any other organization. We just kind of had the need for more people that have supervisory responsibility and experience. Um, you know, hopefully as we grow, it might expand into something more park supervisor, rec supervisor as we build out. But right now, um, just having someone that knows a lot about what we do on both sides and has done a lot of the things on both sides already fill a role where um, it's not just so specific to rec and pulling stuff, you know, time and energy out of rec to help with parks and then vice versa. Um, and hopefully ultimately it'll give me a little bit more time to work on all these things that we're talking about, the grander things that we want to move forward with, so. And congratulations to him. He couldn't, he couldn't be here this evening, but um, he will be at the next meeting and you know, maybe he'll start running these meetings one day. I don't know. No, no, no. Delegation, number one role of a manager, right? Um, no, but that'll, that'll also oper- uh, open up some more opportunity with our recreation department too. So, uh, we've had very good luck with our um, recreation staff, the ones that were here before, the new ones, so.
Yes.
Um, just more opportunity. Next, uh, Box Elder Creek Trees and the Knolls Linear Park. Um, Jesse touched on this, but we had um, Bart, Bartlett come out and do, they took down one massive cottonwood that was hollowed out. Um, all, all sorts. They spent more hours than they were expecting to, just because of the undertaking that it turned out to be. But they did a, a wonder for that corridor. I think everybody should go take a look at it. It's so much safer um, for the people, especially morning, evening, when you can't see things as much. Um, now that we're getting into, you know, it's really nice now, but freezing temperatures, the potential for freeze bakes, cottonwoods are hate to say, but they call them the widow makers, right? Because they are the hollowed out trees that blow in the wind and snap. Um, so they did an amazing job going through there. Um, next will be potentially over at Wellville on McClellan, where there's some impact on the road that you can, you know, drive right down the county road sixty, right at the corner there. They need to trim up that, so that'll be the next one. But go check it out. It looks fantastic. Um, I already spoke on the Noco Trails Summit that we're gonna be presenting at. Um, I do have a, some updates on the park maps. We do have someone contracted to come out and do aerial footage via drone next month. Um, it's not a guarantee, but I was told by those doing it, we should potentially have digital and print copies by October um, of a park map. So there's an update there. And it will be, and we'll print it out just as the format is, but it will be able to be expanded on and adjusted as we make new amenities and make changes to trails and bring in new parks. So I just had the conversation the other day, so.
So potentially have something to pass out like what we had before or?
Yes, yes, print and digital. So people will be able to access it via their phone and also have them sitting at our front desk and the library and at your shop to be able to pass out.
Possibly um, for trick or treating being street as well, like we have potential to get
Oh, yeah.
To get park maps.
That would be a hu- I, I would want it maybe bef- even before the, the fishing derby, if we can do that with the fishing docks, just to be like, here's the newest amenity. It's already on the map. It's already here. It, the creation of the digital content isn't gonna take long, and then it's just printing off of the digital content to create a, a tri-fold or whatever we decide to do. Um, it's just getting the pictures and then flipping it over into content, so. Our, our chair, I'll, I'll put them on the, I'll put them on it. No, um, our communication specialist is awesome, so he's gonna, there'd been a lot going on, um, but he's like, I'm so sorry, it's on the back burner, but I do have a contract and we are gonna do the footage next month. And after that, the turnaround can be maybe a week, maybe two.
We know the budget will really get pushed for printing if we can come up with the money or if.
Don't worry about it. All good.
Okay. I'm excited. We have talked about a logo, about faded logo. It would be nice if we had a faded logo for the.
Yeah, um, let me, let me run that by again. I don't know how that works as far as, I mean, we're, we won't change any of our Wellington logos. I don't know if there will be a prost potential for a prost logo. Potential for a post logo or anything like that, um. Uh, we'd probably take that internally, um, eventually would have to be approved by the town to be put on town stuff, unless we're, you know, have sponsors from an outside entity that give our logo. But if it's a town sponsored thing, it's something that we would take in on in-house, um, but yeah, that's something to talk about, okay, thank you. Agenda for Billy. Recreation, so we've been putting up kiosks everywhere on all reservable fields and in places, we don't have that shelters. The last one we have to do is the tennis courts, and basically we've been internally um just kinda posting. Any sort of messages we want, um, any promotional stuff, but also um to alleviate any um. Discrepancies between field use, just pu- posting up there when our fields are gonna be rented out for games, for special events, all that kinda stuff, so it's something that. Uh, I took from previous experience and finally had the time to actually construct and put up there, so you'll see those at library, library. WCP, WCP, tennis, and then we'll eventually get one at uh also at the shelter, the reservable shelters. So if people reserve them, it's like, hey, you know, don't don't set your party up here, because it's gonna be reserved in an hour, so.
Yeah, that's good for pickleball versus tennis.
Very much is.
Yes.
Um, and baseball practice versus baseball games or softball games. Uh, we will be running um softball, youth softball, um, is expanded from one team to two teams. So we went from zero at the beginning of the year to one team, and we got so much interest, we have two age groups now, they will be participating again in the IPGSA. Um, the cool thing about this year is that, or this season, is that um. We're trying to work with scheduling, and it's been a lot of work the last few days to actually, instead of just host our home games, host home. Or host home games with team spots, so there's a potential for us to bring in teams from anywhere and everywhere in IPGSA. And IPGSA runs from um, from Wyoming all the way down to Canyon City, um, and into Nebraska. So we will be a site potentially um for weekend games for multiple different age groups. Is Saturdays and potentially Sundays for high school softball too, so we're gonna try to make events out of it and get food trucks. And kind of expand that and bring more attention to softball in our community, went from zero to two to hopefully as many baseball teams as we have, right? Which we have a lot of baseball teams, so that's been a really fun and exciting thing, a lot of work from recreation to get that restarted and uh. Also moving forward, programming is starting, um, adult softball, their first games this evening. And then in two weeks, we'll have uh flag football and soccer starting, and then, you know, before we know it, we'll move into the winter stuff. So inside, um, updates on trails is basically just uh the symposium that we're gonna do and all the work that we can. Look forward to in the future with the park and trail master plan, I will be trying to do some soft trail upgrades. Um, and get some concrete in areas that need to be done, and then pushing soft trails to the side of those, probably in Wellville, hopefully in coordination with. Um, getting the dock in, that might be too much of an undertaking for for public works to do, but hopefully at around the same time, um, as that goes, so. Those are my updates.
My major update is, it hasn't been approved yet, but there's been a lot of consensus, and we did a a very major strategic planning process. Um, some of the themes that came out of it, um, were in general. Providing outstanding municipal services for a community of today and tomorrow is the mission, um, and they were guided by principles of community-centered. Fiscal responsibility, accountability and relationships, that relationships piece, I think, really. Uh, I think was important, because it was, you know, relying on leveraging other groups or organizations or advisory groups and like, I don't know. I'm worrying them, I think, to do more, so everybody's maximized, um, and then the reason to do that was to grow responsibility. Cultivate and nurture community spaces, that was a big one, where all the community center, everything like that came under. Although it also falls under some of the other categories of foster economic vibrancy, ensure strong town operation, so. For example, if we're bringing in tournaments or weekend games for how many extra teams with, that's how many people are coming to town for recreation. So these are all great opportunities, and not to mention improving quality of life and amenities and those kinda things, so. Uh, the community center and the feasibility of that, and you know, parks, master plan, all those were really falling. Under a lot of the items, because those are for economic vibrancy, but also for the community spaces, and that was one of the top four, like. You know, goals, so we'll see how those play out and what we can do to accomplish them. And this is that, hasn't been final approved, but it was a very group process, so I expect it to be something similar to that when we do adopt it. So I think it was a huge win, and I think that your participation with things with the board and in general, the good work that you're doing. On beha- on behalf of the town is making a huge difference, and it's really. Opening eyes and and you guys have a big influence, so I wanted to say thank you for that, um, I went in blazing with some of ideas. And I think that I really didn't have to, because you guys were already so compelling, but I reminded anyway. But but I think we represented well, the other thing is I'm now the liaison for the Main Streets Program, so when we're talking about leveraging relationships. I'm gonna try to maximize that as well, so, and then as always, if you have any questions or concerns or anything, please. And I'll get that survey, if it's still open, the county survey, I'll get it to Billy to distribute.
Yeah, so you put some pins in there.
Yeah, all the pins, place.
All the pins.
The sage entrance off of County Roads, but we gotta pin that one up.
That's sketchy.
Mm-hmm.
Sketchy.
Mm-hmm.
I worry about it, especially with our face school students, since they start to drive too, and that curve coming south.
Oh, maybe I should give an upgrade, uh, update on on those kinda things, because it does impact like people going to school, walking. I don't know how it might engage in like trails, but they are making progress in the County Road nine, Highway one, removing. The concept is right now that 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 curve will be removed, um, so they're doing twenty-first. Is it today?
Oh, yes.
I think they may have had an update meeting with CDOT, so we will have some new information soon, so. I don't think that really impacts this group too much, but but for kids traveling and lack of trails. That came up today for how do those kids get to school.
Yeah, that's great.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, more to come. Happy to help.
Do we have any um updates or anything for Aaron? Do you have anything?
No, I'm all good.
I, but I think we're good to adjourn. We have a lot of time to do for next month, so, um, yeah, thank you.
Meeting adjourned seven forty-six.